We'll call the meeting to order. This is the November Wasika School Board Regular Business Meeting. It's Thursday, November 21st, 2024, 5:30 PM, and we are in the Central Building, second-floor conference room. And we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on, approval of agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve the agenda. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Recognition of Visitors. Looks like we have one student here tonight, is that correct? Would you like to say anything? All right, thanks for coming. Thanks for being here. Moving on, Payment of Claims. Grant.
I reviewed the payment claims this month with some detail, and I make a motion to approve the accounts payable of $1,716,049.86, along with the October dental of $12,133.58 and the payroll of $925,082.47.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion and a second for Payment of Claims. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for Consent Agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve Consent Agenda. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Moving right along, we'll turn it over to Dr. Hudson.
Thank you. So as we move our information items tonight, we'll start off with Dr. McGuire. Will share with us the World's Best Workforce Report here from the last school year. And she'll explain, and I mentioned this in the update yesterday too, there's some changes coming up down the pike here for how this report is labeled and presented. And the DAC Committee has seen much of this information in various parts over the last few months. And so this is kind of our summary presentation, so.
Thanks, thank you for having me. We'll go through this quickly because we will spend a little more time discussing it at the DAC meeting. And then, like Dr. Hudson said, these pieces of information have been presented before. This is just all in one spot, based on how MDE requires of these four particular goal areas. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see the four that we've seen before. The first change for this year is that they removed the read well by third grade. So that's the fifth one you might remember having seen before. But now that's a part of our local literacy plan instead. So, and it's shifted also to all students are reading at grade level. So that one is housed in that report instead. So for the World's Best Workforce for this year, it's that all children are ready for school. We're closing those achievement gaps. They're college and career ready and the graduation rate are the four areas they identify. And then we set specific single-year or multi-year goals. Something will come up. So this, just a reminder, this is for the 2023-24 school year. So we're looking at data from last school year, with the exception of one that I'll point out when we get there. So the first school kindergarten readiness is that 90% of incoming kindergartners will be deemed ready for school. So that's looking at a variety of academic and social skills. And results on that were that 96% of incoming kindergartners were determined to be ready. So again, that's fall of '23. And so that goal was met. Just for comparison, to look ahead next year when we talk about this year, the percentage of students ready for kindergarten is 92.9%. In terms of steps that we're taking in order to try to improve that, I think our percentage is pretty high. But we're still continuing to work, for example, on that early childhood connection to kindergarten and always looking for ways to kind of improve that communication. The next goal, closing achievement gaps. There are a lot of different areas that we could look at for this, but we look at two of our areas that are a little bit higher in reducing the achievement gap for Black and Hispanic students. And this was a multi-year goal that we would close that achievement gap by 10 percentage points. And so for looking for that three-year period from '22 to '24, achievement gaps were reduced by 1.7 for the math assessment for Hispanic students and .8 for Hispanic students in reading. On the other side, though, achievement gaps increased for Black students in both math and reading. So technically, that goal was not met. But as we look at some of the numbers, you'll see how that fluctuates a little bit just because our numbers aren't very high. And so it's a little more, a little less steady than it would be if we had a, if an average actually showed an overall average. So on the next slide, you'll see what that looks like for math. So a lot of numbers there, but you'll see that in 2022, our overall district percentage was 36.7% of students who were proficient on the math MCA. So when looking at the Black students, that was 14 percentage points behind our overall average. Jumping ahead to 2024, then, that was 19.7%. So that gap increased. If you look, though, you can see in 2023, that percentage dipped down, and then it went up a little bit. So that's, again, kind of that fluctuation I referred to. For Hispanic students, then, you see they went from 18.8% in 2022 to 17.1% behind the overall district average. So that's where you see that decline. Moving on to reading. So from 2022, overall district percentage proficiency was 43.6%. Black students were actually ahead of that overall district average. You can see they dipped down in that gap. Went below a little bit, and then below a little bit more for 2024. For Hispanic students on the bottom, you can see that gap went from 18.6% to 17.8%. So closed that gap a little, but not as much as we were hoping to. In terms of the steps we're working toward that, I'll just point out one thing in particular. Something that's been a really intentional effort for that has been the culturally responsive training that took place as part of that Dial partnership. And so the unique part about that that we've mentioned before, brought up a couple times, is really trying to take a proactive approach by not only training the teachers, but then also looking at some of that data of students, attendance, behavior, and sense of belonging, and looking at what some of those measures are in comparison to last year so that we can try to be a little preventative in, as soon as we see those numbers start to dip, then we have a team of people at the junior high high school who are responding to that. Goal number three, the College and Career Readiness Goal, is based on our exit surveys and that 80% of graduates report that they feel prepared for life after high school. And our, the response to that survey was 88.3%, according to the class of 2023, felt prepared for that transition to whatever it is they chose to do after high school. So that goal was met. And on the next slide, we'll see how that breaks down. So that's on a scale of one to five. And so those top three compile that 88.23%, indicating that they feel well-prepared. Some steps that we're taking to help address that. We're really, some intentional efforts this year from a team of us at the junior high high school that are working on a scope and sequence so that it's not, we have a ton of great experiences that are happening throughout, but just making sure that we have solid experiences that all students get experience, regardless of which teacher they have or what class they're taking, that we can incorporate some of those experiences throughout their 712 educational experience to make sure that they truly do feel prepared, regardless of which direction they choose to go. And goal number four, looking at graduation rates. Our goal was that 90% of all students within the district graduate within four years. And this is a multi-year goal, so we're looking at that for the end of last school year. The result being 76% of students graduated when looking at that from a district perspective. And so that breakdown is 90.7% of high school students graduated within four years. And then ALC was at 6.3%, with 37.5% continuing. Technically, not on track with that one, based on what our goal was, as we talked about before. Just the combination of high school and ALC tends to dip it down a little bit just because we know that four-year plan isn't always reasonable or feasible for the ALC students. So the next couple of slides will show that breakdown. On the left-hand side, we see that overall four-year graduation rate for the district. And the percentage of students continuing dropped out and unknown. The middle one is showing just that high school graduation rate. There's that 90.7%. And then the ALC, at that 6.3%, with a higher percentage continuing. And so this is the one that is, we're looking at '23. This one's the year before because our grad rates aren't official until a little bit later. The next slide shows kind of that fluctuation and why those percentages are a little bit off. Again, left-hand side is showing the overall district. So that green line is showing the district percentage in comparison to the blue line, which is the statewide grad percentage. The middle is showing the senior high in comparison to the overall district. And the state again. And then on the right-hand side, the ALC. So we do see that percentage tend to fluctuate just as our ALC graduation rate changes, depending on whether or not, yeah, those students are continuing in the particular group that we have in that, in that year and that cohort. Graduation rates, our efforts toward that are really individualized on a one-by-one basis just because everybody's needs are different. So counselors do a great job of really working with them on their academic plan. And if, you know, attendance is an issue and just getting them here consistently is the issue, that approach is different than if they need credit recovery and they're really lacking credits. So really just personalizing that approach to meet the needs of whatever the challenges are for that student, to try to help every student graduate. So this is the last year that is officially called the World's Best Workforce. They're changing it to the Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness to just better reflect that it's really a combination of looking at K-12, pre-K-12, actually, academic achievement, and then their readiness after they graduate. And so to better reflect that, they're just changing the name. So it will look very similar in terms of those four goals. But the other goal that they are adding is preparing students to be lifelong learners. So we'll see if the state comes out with something specific that we need to do in terms of what we're reporting for that. But we already have, there's a question on our exit survey that asks about that too. So that would be the logical one, but we'll have conversations around that too of what that data point will look like when we report on this at this time next year. Any questions or anything else that I missed, Dr. Hudson?
No, thank you for that. And I think about, some of the things that causes the fluctuation in our numbers is some of the demographics and some of the population numbers that we have, particularly with our students of color. You know, when those demographic end numbers, if you will, are in a place where we're, we certainly have enough students who want to be focusing on that as a group, but it's also small enough that a few percentage points get swung quite a bit by a handful of students and their performance. So we look at it really from a comprehensive, whole-child perspective. We've used the word personalized learning in the past, but it makes sure every child gets what they need. And the gap piece of it is something that is, we want all students to be successful. We want all students to grow. And we certainly don't ever want the high end or the ceiling, if we will, to come down to lower a gap. And so as we continue to make progress for all students, we'll keep moving forward with that. The other thing too, and Brooke mentioned this, that our ALC population, when we serve a population of about, you know, 70 students that are ALC, so you think about a fourth of them on average are probably four-year graduation eligible on any given year. And then we have a graduating class of 120 to 130 from our high school. When you put those 20-ish students into that number, that does significantly impact our overall percentage, which is why we separate them out just so we have a scope of what's really happening in our buildings, not necessarily to be critical of any particular result. So later on in the action items, we'll ask you to approve this report. I always get a small chuckle out of the approving process that the state requires us to do because I don't quite know what would happen if you wouldn't approve it or why you would not approve it. But that's just part of how state statute works for this particular report.
Probably making sure it's actually presented to us or something, so.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions. Do you have, do you know by chance the count of Black and Hispanic children this year and last year? Did it change or?
I can tell you exactly for last year. About 2023-24 was 28. And I think, I was looking at that today, I think it was 27. So it was right around the same.
It's the same, okay. And for ALC, you know, we saw that there was, you know, kids who didn't graduate and it was unknown or dropped. It didn't happen two years before. Do you know what would be the reason this year that?
What didn't happen before?
There was four categories. If I didn't miss anything, previous years they didn't have. There was very little dropped, and there was nothing for unknown. This year, they are two, you know, there are higher quantities there. Would you know why?
Yeah, I actually asked a lot of questions around that because I thought it was unusual that there was a high number there. And it's particularly at the ALC, it's really tough when they're coming from other districts and there's a lot of transience. So it was like, yeah, we dug into the student names and we just didn't have an accurate record of where they went because they'll report to us that they're going to a certain district, and then they may or may not actually go to that other district. And so in terms of keeping track of where actually they end up and where they're enrolled, we don't necessarily know that when they leave here.
And it's not specific necessarily to your question, Adita, but for drop in general, that could mean, I'm going, I'm 20 years old. I am still only a sophomore in credits. I'm going to take the GED. And so I'm going to drop and then go pursue a GED. In fact, I just worked with a student today and the administrator about, it's just not going to make it. So this is the thing that's going to be the best plan for that particular child. They show up on a drop, as a drop, on this particular document. So some of those, I would say probably the majority of our drops, which are very, very few, are trying to go that option versus just, I'm just going to drop out of school. Because a high school credential is the bare minimum for just about anything in life at this point. So we try to get kids even to that GED if that's the right fit.
And that's, yeah, Mandy and I talked about that specifically, and that was mentioned, and also the fact of, like, MDE has their cutoff point. I don't remember if it's act of our first for this one, of their decision by that point. Well, Mandy referenced, there's plenty of students who come in later after that cutoff point where it appears that they've dropped out, but then they still come back and continue, whether that's toward a GED or credit recovery or it's as accurate as that information was at that point in time, but not necessarily accurate beyond that point.
Thank you.
Are our numbers for the ALC in the ballpark with other ALCs?
Let's say they're consistent in terms of being inconsistent. I mean, that's the only thing that's pretty standard. These numbers in particularly are a little bit lower in comparison to other ALCs in our area.
For graduation numbers?
Correct.
Right. Were you asking about population numbers or asking that too? Or was you talking about graduation?
Well, I just mean, you know, we have, the numbers that were up there for our ALC.
Correct.
If we went to Otana, went to Mankato, would we find similar numbers or?
I think she, yeah, you're right on. We're probably a little lower on that end right now. But what I can tell you for enrollment is we serve a lot of students for the population that we have in our community. So we have about 70, 80, about 80 ALC students. Mankato, which serves all of Mankato and New Ulm and those areas, run 110 in their ALC. So we serve quite a few students relative to our population.
Are we pulling, are we pulling from our little districts?
Correct, yeah.
So that's why.
We are the ALC for Janesville, New Richland, and Waterville.
And those numbers do not affect their graduation numbers.
Correct, because they're out there in our number.
Even though their address is.
Correct. Yeah, because they're officially enrolled here as part of their ALC.
Any other questions for Brooke? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. So for my report this evening, I've got just a handful of things. I barraged you with items last Thursday, so we'll keep it a little bit lighter here tonight. But I still have a handful of updates to give you as we work through. When you think about a strategic plan areas, the Learning for All area. So coming up here the week after Thanksgiving, December 5th ends our first trimester. So our students are working hard, getting prepared for either the end of their trimester activities, finals at the high school, getting, working into those things as we get into our break here. Working on reviewing our data for the spring. The DAC meeting's working on that. Professional development has been in high swing this year. And one thing that we've dove into this fall, MTSS is Multi-Tiered Systems of Support. We used to call it RTI, Response to Intervention. That's about students who need additional support. They, you might hear the language, tier one, tier two, tier three, support for students. And we have got strong systems in place in all of our buildings, but in some places, they're different. So for example, they might use Character Strong or they might use this particular strategy at Hartley. Then they go to the intermediate school and they're doing same theme, but just different language. And they go to the high school and they do different things too. Same concepts, but just different language. So we've been working with MDE as part of this learning opportunity with myself and the principals, Dr. McGuire, and Jeff Wagner, Special Ed, talking about, how do we make sure we're aligned and systemic? So when students are moving through the grades, they're hearing the same language throughout the course of the grades. And it was interesting because we were like, as we were in our last session, we were hearing about this tier-two team. Like, oh, that's our problem-solving team. And there's a step that could be in front of that that we don't necessarily use. So we're thinking of things that could really help us make sure all students are engaged. I think as far as the efficient and effective operations and safe and welcoming schools, as we talked about last week, we're always reviewing alternatives and upgrades for buildings. We're looking at, right now, specifically upgrades for our building entry and camera planning systems. So right now, as you all have probably experienced over the last year or so, our building entry fobs can be finicky, is probably the most polite way to say it. But then our cameras also do great work, but they're getting dated. And so as we need to update those throughout the district, we're looking at different alternatives, different, no decisions have been made, but Brian Herring is working closely with Jeff Jensen. I know earlier this week, they went and saw the system at a neighboring district that they use. And it also will all potentially tie into our building check-in system as well when people come into the offices. So not looking at doing anything substantially different by structure, but just organized equipment, how do you do things different? This is also the time of the year, and some of you have heard me say this in the last few weeks, where, you know, kind of this, this school year is kind of off the runway. And then we're kind of, after the first of the year, and from the district office perspective, school board, we're really thinking about '25, '26, and beyond. And so a lot of this November and December period is about thinking about, what does organizational structure look like? Do we have gaps? And my whiteboard is filled with different things every single day about how we could do things differently, or should we or could we? And that's a big part of our making sure we're doing, being as effective and efficient as possible. Student advisory groups begin in December. I think our first one is scheduled at the junior, senior high. So working with Dr. Miller on what that group could look like as far as who might attend those. So I'm looking forward to meeting with some students and having some direct conversations there with that, for that opportunity. In the area of a community engagement, you know, we're getting, we just had, middle of the trimester, some conferences at our junior, senior high. In early December, we're coming up in our end-of-trimester conferences for our younger grades. So that's coming up. We'd have gotten some pretty good, as far as quantity, feedback on our calendar proposal we threw out earlier this week, as far as what folks are thinking about that. And I think as of this morning, I think we had 127 comments submitted that we'll be able to theme here in the next few weeks and see if it makes, if there's some things we're seeing that we need to do differently. And that's why we do it, because we want to see what the community is thinking. And so I appreciate everyone who's given feedback on that. Might do a little reminder tomorrow, just to make on social media, to say if you haven't given feedback. I might close it early next week just so we have a time to now process what we've heard. I couldn't begin to tell you if there's any strong tendencies one way or the other, because in initial glances, it's, there's a lot of different perspectives, right? And so until I have a chance to really go through and say there was actually 40 of these and two of these, we'll get to that point when we get there. And then finally, on community engagement, pretty exciting. You've probably seen the social media posts. The County News did an article this week. And then I know Cow's Radio is going to have one either today or tomorrow. He was going to mention it. 100-year celebration for Central is this Saturday from 12 to 1:30. Amy's been working with Jeff Jensen and myself on creating kind of a self-guided tour that folks can give themselves when they come into the building and just kind of see what the building's used by over the years. We found multiple treasures down in the basement here this last few weeks. And as you walk downstairs on your way out, one that might be interesting to look at is the Rules for Teachers from, was it 1876 or 187, 18-something like that? Yeah, and it's interesting what that looked like at those particular days. So it's kind of fun to celebrate what this building has served to the community with over the last 100 years. And then the final thing I would mention for myself is that, thanks for the work with the Evaluation Committee. And my goal is to bring my mid-year report for my goals to the committee here in December. It's been our last few years' model. And then after they've had a chance to review that and give some feedback, then we'll kind of report that out to the full board, either in the December or January meeting, depending on what the timeline looks like. To go back and look at my calendar about exactly, if it's two days before the board meeting, we probably won't report in December. I'd remember when that calendar meeting is. So plugging right along, we've had, you know, positive transportation days the last few days, as winter is now here. I think going home yesterday was probably the trickiest of the last few days that I've seen. But, you know, it's warming up here now and roads are clearing off. And now we're getting ready for winter. It's almost December, if you can believe it, so. Any questions?
I have a question about the student groups that you talked about, meeting with Dr. Miller. What would that look like?
So what I'm doing is, and this is something that would be, each of the buildings, I'm going to meet with a group of students three times a year, have some lunch, just get some feedback. And what the principals are doing is choosing students to be part of those groups, that opportunity.
And that's starting next year?
The first, well, we'll have our first group in December, so next month. Yep, and then we'll have probably one or two more this year. Go that way. We might do different kids each time. I was talking to Mr. Hutmyer for sure about, he'd like to have just different kids each time. And at the high school, we might have some consistency there. Kind of thinking about some of the things you talked about last year, but making sure lots of different kids are part of that, so it's not just the same kids every single time. But talk, ask him about that, because I have not heard that he's finding a list. I think it's December 12th or something. But yeah, checking in about that. So it's an opportunity for me to get in and hear some more conversations. Good question.
That it?
That's it for me.
Okay, any more questions, Eric? Okay, Sarah?
Hey, I have a paper handout tonight. So.
So.
There you go.
It's that way.
Well, I guess I have one. Around that way.
Okay.
You guys keep it.
I get extra. All right. Well, Eric's been looking for the future. I have largely been living in last year. So 23, 24, I'm still working through finalizing our audited financials, working daily with the auditors as we near wrapping up hopefully next week, our first weekend to separate. This handout today is just meant to give a preliminary look at our general fund, fund balance for the June 30th, 2024 fiscal year end. We looked at it in a pretty decent detail at the finance committee meeting the other night. So I'll just give you a high level summary. We're looking towards ending our June 30th, 2024 general fund year with a fund balance overall of $9.3 million. Of that, $4.86 million will be an unassigned general fund fund balance. If you look down, that's about 22% of expenditures and about 81 days in fund balance. When I looked back at the revised budget, we are budgeting to stay about flat in that unassigned fund balance. So we've dipped down a little bit below that, about a hundred thousand dollars, but it's still overall very healthy. I don't know if there are any questions on anything specific in regards to fund balance. There will be a full audit report coming from the auditors, hopefully in December, if not December, January.
I, I just was thinking about something just now. We hadn't talked about that, but finance committee members who looked at this on two, last Thursday, Tuesday? We did identify some basic skills funding that we were able to code some staff too. So that unassigned fund balance looks slightly higher than you saw the other day. And that's why, because we're able to move some of that into those restricted funds working there. For reference, the unassigned fund balances, like Sarah said, roughly a hundred thousand dollars decrease from the year prior. You can see that big increase in the overall funds, because some of those restricted funds, specifically staff development, operating capital and basic skills, still have some monies to be spent that'll move on there. We are predicting that to decrease by about a hundred thousand. It's actually increased by roughly a million dollars. And that is restricted fund money. So it's not extra cash we necessarily have to utilize for whatever, but it's, we have staff development that Brooke was able to get a grant for. That's why we didn't have to spend this year, so we'll wait it for next year. The ESR money was for basic skills, so that's carrying over. So overall, very healthy fund balance as we, as we've gone forward. So thank you, Sarah, for your work on that this fall.
Yeah. I don't have the full monthly financial report that you guys are used to seeing around this time of year, just because I am playing the new card and have been working quite a bit on audit, but just for, you know, a basic understanding and peace of mind. When I did look at general fund expenses, year to year to date, or year over year to date through the end of October, expenditures were, were sitting pretty steady at around 23% of our budgeted spend. So that is on track. Revenues are a little bit distorted just because of the work I'm doing with the audit. So I'll bring that full monthly financial report that you guys are used to seeing to the board in December.
Fiscal year 23 and 24 was 21% of budget to this point. So we're right there right now. So that's good. For expenditures, it's already on track.
Okay.
And the last piece of my report is in regards.
Question, Dave?
Oh, sorry.
No.
Okay.
Is in regards to enrollment. Enrollment to date in November is at about 1,726 students, which is down a little bit from October, but that is to be expected at this time of the year. And overall, it's above what we included in our preliminary budget for enrollment and revenue for 24, 25. So that is looking healthy as well.
Okay. Any questions for Sarah? All right. Hearing none, we'll move along. Committee and board member reports about if we start with Alan and Colin tonight.
Okay. So our student council is starting our food drive when we get back from Thanksgiving break. And last year we raised 1,140 and collected over 4,000 items. So we're looking to beat that record essentially this year, which is exciting. And then our end of trimester is coming up, like you said, which is kind of scary, but exciting because it means the holidays. And then our winter sports started and there's a couple of games coming this week. So that's always fun. And then we heard that you guys wanted more of like, than just sports and like general updates things from us. So like, are there any questions or like general things that you want to hear more about that we can bring to you guys?
Who said that?
We want more, but we're not sure what.
I think you kind of turned the tables on us there.
Yeah. Who calls in sick the most? We needed an update on that stuff.
Well, I'd say really anything that, that you guys find interesting or things that, I mean, anything academically or, or?
Yeah.
That, that are interest, yeah, anything.
Okay.
Yeah. But even just sharing, yeah, a food drive. I mean, that's something that's not sports related and that's appreciated to hear that. So, yeah.
Well, and one thing I didn't realize, sorry to hit that. One thing I didn't realize was the job shadowing and how they're like pushing that, because I had a few requests for it at work and I was like, kind of wondering what was going on. And then going into the school and seeing that on the board, I guess I didn't, I didn't know that that was going on in the day to day either, but it's nice to see, nice to hear.
It's actually, my senior actually mentioned that to me. He like told me something about school. So I didn't know that, but yeah.
Okay. And I just think about anything about, anything more about student life. So you mentioned the end of the first trimester, right? So how does that feel as a senior that wow, okay, now I'm a third of the way through? So some of those things that might impact you, we're happy to listen, to hear those experiences from you too. So just think about that.
Some of those day trips, like going to the prison.
Just for the day, don't stay.
I'm up. Um, okay. So I just had the.
Was Alan gonna?
Oh.
Oh.
Alan, do you have any?
Oh, sorry.
Jazz band auditions are this weekend, in this week. So then we're really excited to start performing this winter for.
Good.
Go.
Okay. I just had the, the finance meeting was all, we already kind of went through the audit and the enrollment. A couple of other things that we talked about was the truth in taxation and how that's coming around the corner. And then talked briefly about health insurance and anybody who pays any attention to health insurance knows that it's just continuing to increase. So just doing the best we can with that.
Okay. Thank you. Darren?
I think facilities we didn't have, did we? Do we have that?
Well, we just. It'll be, we pushed it. Or it was supposed to be on Thanksgiving and we pushed it to December.
Yeah. But policy, we just covered some, some standard policies, just went over, nothing crazy about it. But you know, I think like we typically state, we got to go through like the bullying one yearly or annually. So nothing, nothing too out of the ordinary there.
Okay. I did watch the webinar today. MSBA had a webinar on mentoring, board members mentoring new members, mentoring each other. Pretty general stuff, but I thought it was worth watching and I'm sure they'll have it on their website sometime, if you'd like to take a look at it. It was one of their shorter ones. I think it only went about a half hour. So yeah, just something good to think about. Adita?
I had only policy meeting and Darren covered.
I did not have any meetings this year. I know. I think it's like twice this year I've had that happen. Yeah.
I also had personnel, which was actually back in October, but it was since the last meeting, which we spent a lot of time talking about calendar stuff and some just organizational things that are, you're thinking about. Also I had the professional growth and development committee a couple of days ago, and they were talking again about October and November professional days and responses to that. Spent a decent amount of time on the technology and things that are changing with that. And I think, I think the idea is understanding what the teachers are struggling with so that, that committee can know what to help on the next days to help those out. So Brooke runs that and does a really good job with it. Finance, let me cover that.
Okay. You ought to keep us going.
Sure. I was only going to point out and congratulate both of these guys and all the students who were in the indoor, which happened a week and a half ago. And I think it was very successful, which was an end of great marching season. So great job and all that. Also wanted to point out the South Central Flyers, which is our cooperative hockey team, has had two games. I think they've won one and maybe lost one, but that's been a new thing this year. So it's kind of exciting that, that even though we maybe had a little less numbers, they're still able to give a chance to all those girls who are playing hockey.
Okay. Thank you. Julie?
I just wanted to officially, since we're on camera, congratulate Megan Selvick on being named the WEA teacher of the year. And also that I really appreciated hearing from her and her, some of her teaching colleagues in the special education department at Hartley last week at our workshop. That was really an informative staff spotlight. I really appreciated that. So thank you to them for coming and sharing about the valuable work that they do. So.
Okay. Adita?
I wanted to say the same thing.
I'm sorry.
There was a football banquet last night. I just wanted to congratulate to our boys team to, for the great season and say thank you to the coaches and all the volunteers who helped to make that season successful.
Okay. I just have a couple here and nobody else has mentioned it. So just in case you didn't know, this is American education week. And then I have one more that I found about, found out about here in the last couple of days. And our, our, out at the high school, Greta Lukin, she goes to Hartley and reads the classes there in December. Evidently she did this last year too, and they said it was a huge success and the kids loved it. They said Greta is a warm and personable person, and it was a great opportunity for them to interact with the law enforcement, with the law enforcement in a positive way. So we just want to recognize and thank Greta for that.
Thanks for whoever's putting out the reminders for the hats and mittens for these little kids, because I know that I gotta be reminded every now and then before I kick them out the door.
Their post today was really cute. Hartley's, yeah, it was.
And then if anybody's looking for some breakfast on Sunday, they're having a fundraiser at the American Legion for the Waseka High School Wrestling and a fundraiser there. So I think go towards some equipment that they need.
Okay. Melissa?
I believe I saw somewhere, I was trying to find it online now and I don't see it, but I think ALC is wrapping up a donation drive of some sort. Is that? And so that's going through tomorrow, I believe. And then the other, other thing I wanted to comment on was, was Siki yearbook and their TikTok. And I feel like the school store has a TikTok too. If you're on TikTok at all, those are some pretty cute little snippets, videos they have. So go out and take a peek at those. They're doing a great job on that.
I'm going to give a shout out to all of the people that were involved in, within fall sports this fall and how they had a great, successful season. And I'm also going to give a shout out to Demarius Russell for being one of the top 25 players in this whole state of Minnesota.
Cool. That it? Okay. We'll keep moving along here onto action items. Need a motion to approve acceptance of our gifts and donations. Looks like we have a couple this evening. Faith United Methodist Church, $200, Lenz Lawn Care, $285. I guess I'll make the, well, we gotta do a roll call, right?
We gotta make a motion first.
Make a motion and second first.
We need motion and a second first.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right. Motion and second, roll call, vote.
Uh, Greg Shepherd?
Yes.
Julie Anderson?
Yes.
Kedina Mansfield?
Yes.
Alyssa Bowers?
Yes.
Darren Prueber?
Yes.
Dave None?
Yes. Okay. Moving on. Action item B, approve disposal of banned instruments.
I'll make a motion to approve the disposal of the list of banned instruments as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion and second to approve disposal of banned instruments. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item C, approve world's best workforce report.
I'll make a motion to approve the world's best workforce report.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve the world's best workforce report. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And finally, item D, approve reviewed policies.
I make a motion to approve review policy for 14, for 15, 506 and 514.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve reviewed policies. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Just a couple of reminders.